Four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, under legislation enacted on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. The statute, chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we do not have any correspondence for this evening, so we'll move ahead to the approval of minutes. We have a recommended motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three school committee meeting as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Do we have anyone at home right now?
No.
Alright, and yes for me. Thank you very much. Visitor comments. We will open for visitor comments if there are any visitors who would like to speak. They're welcome too. I don't think we have anyone at home. Alright, seeing none, we will move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Yep.
Thank you, Nicole. So I'm looking at Dagan, and I know Dagan hopefully will mention the trip to California.
Yes.
And I know, Nicole, you too, but just wanted to just be on thank you to the chaperones, Mrs. Worland and everybody else who chaperoned, because the pictures coming back and just realizing the amount of time and energy and dedication that the chaperones took care of in taking fifty students to California for the week and creating such an amazing experience. Thank you to the parents and families for letting the students go, but also especially thank you to the students because all of the reports coming back were these students are so amazing, they're so polite, they're so respectful, they're so, you know, they're just really representing Long Meadow very well. So, so thank you to the chaperones, but also to the students and to the families.
Definitely echo the same. It was lovely to hear the reports coming back, and I know that it looked like everybody had a fantastic time and thank you.
Fantastic time.
Yeah.
Your son has a great room.
Glad to hear. Didn't make too much of a mess. Yeah, it was wonderful trip. So thank you to everybody who participated and put their time and energy into making it happen. You guys were busy too. I was definitely thinking.
I can go through it.
Yeah. You'll tell us all about it. Fantastic. Other committee announcements or recognitions? Alright, seeing none. We are headed toward business with guests. We have a few visitors today. We have Nicole Allen visiting us and teacher Ms. Emery Salvo, or Salvon, sorry, are welcome to join us. And come on up, introduce yourselves.
As they get settled, part of our, our ongoing efforts to demonstrate the ways that we have been intentional in trying to find opportunities for students to develop the competencies associated with the vision of the graduate. And as the committee knows, we're also incredibly proud of the introduction of STEAM programming at our middle schools. STEAM meaning science, technology, engineering, the arts and math, integrated as a related arts experience for kids in grades six, seven, and eight at both of our middle schools. So tonight, show off some of the great work that students have done and by extension, the great work that our teachers have done, Principal Nicole Allen and Emery Salvon. So do you guys, any introductory comments? Anything you want me to? I know you have a video that we have queued up for you.
We do, yes. I don't think you need to hear much from the principal or the teacher. It's really the students, I think, that will be paramount to hear from. And luckily, we, there were several students that volunteered to record some of their projects to share with school committee, and so far, so great. We're thrilled with the program.
Fantastic. Thank you.
We'll queue up the video here and, one second. Oh, give me one second. We're gonna pause that, get the right audio. I could use Mrs. Salvon's help. She's our technology.
I can hear. It just sounds like the volume's.
Yeah. Appears to be... It's coming out of my computer for some reason.
Yeah.
Trying to get it to come out of our meeting. Oh, here we go.
There we go.
That's the button.
There we go.
There you go.
Ten, five thousand three hundred and sixty.
Hi, I'm Dina and I'm Ella, and we're a student here at Glenbrook Middle School. So I'm gonna be talking about career exploration, and I'll be talking about letter robotics. Okay, so career exploration was one of the first things we did in STEAM, and it was a little fun to be, where we had to learn about STEAM-related careers, including mathematicians. And we learned about, like, how much they pay, the work environment, and a bunch of other stuff about those careers, not maybe in the future.
Now, you know, about career exploration, I'll be talking about letter robotics. Letter robotics is basically when you build onto this device, and then you program it so that it can move and do all sorts of fun stuff. It could be for real life needs or just for fun. The first robot I really, like, programmed and made difference for me, it was an everyday robot called the Rabbit. And you could program it to pick up stuff and drop stuff, just in case it was, like, super germy and you'd want it touching. The next robot I built, one was called the Right Dancer. It was super fun. I put music in the background. I made it stand, so it was, like, it was just. The next robot was called the Popper, and you could make it race, you could give it winners. So it's like my robot over, so we're so happy right now.
Two, one.
Two.
Hello. We are in grade two here at Glenbrook. I'm Grace.
I'm Emma.
And I'm Ella.
And we didn't have to save the shopping cart anymore, so we modeled it to save for Ella.
In order to do this, we had to use the EDP process.
Here's the video remake of our version of the remodeled shopping cart.
Oh my god. Are you kidding me? That's such a problem. It's so dangerous. Maybe we can come up with a solution.
That's a good idea.
After much research, we came up with a growth type of statistic criteria.
Despite the many constraints, we used communication for instance to come up with the bag holder mobile.
Come forward, the video appears, you can play it today and have it stored.
Next, we have a phone holder. It will be right here, so you can check your shopping list when you shop. But thankfully, the phone holder will charge as soon as your friend gets rid of them. And so we didn't have to aim to have to go in and check out what was made for you. Now, there's a scanner on the side holder, so when you put your groceries in your cart, you scan them and you can pay right away.
Number three is the bag holder, and it's supposed to, you don't have to use up cards before you enter.
Number four is what we call the get out holder. Right here will be a little seat, and it will be adjustable, so you can pull out, tie your tickets, or if you don't have a ticket, push it all the way there, and you have more grocery space. But you don't want your kid falling out, so we all have a seat out there. Right here and here will be grocery holders, but of course, you can make this whole thing the get out holder, or just a little.
Eight. Using the iterative process, we have created these wheels with full rotation ad brakes.
Whoa. You know what? That's what hurt us most this time, because we had a tiny bumper. Five, the five holder mobile.
Here are our STEAM projects that we worked on. This is my STEAM website with a picture of my group's EDP design process poster, where we learned about things like prototyping and improving your prototype. This is my solar powered car, part of my website, where it shows how we use system engineering to design our car. This is our original prototype for a solar powered car. We used the iterative process and went through the EDP design process to create it. This is the part of my website where I talk about the speed data and how fast my solar powered car went. I also describe how I carried a can on my car, which was part of the transportation system. Also, in the end, I described the input and the output of my car. Here is a video of us racing our cars using a battery pack. Here is a video of one of our cars running off of a solar battery.
Hi, I'm Malia, and this is my hurricane hospital page. We learned a lot about tree printing in this unit. We learned about CAD, which is computer aided design. We also learned about info, which is how much of the inside of a project is spilled in, and our supports. During the final test, we learned that houses with long poles survived floods better than houses with shorter foundations. Here's a brochure that we designed for if we were going to sell the house. This is a video of our hurricane.
Three, two, one. Category two. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, three, two, one. Three, three, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Category four. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Category five. Ten, nine.
Who survived?
They have this one. They have this kind of game.
Yeah, that one moved.
Let's do one.
Hey, we are from the Glenbrook Upcycling Furniture Company, and we are here to study about sustainable prototype chairs and recycled materials using the EDP process.
What are you doing?
Talking to this school team.
I'm glad you're listening.
Nah.
Fine. I think it's a little bit of EDP process. What's that?
It stands for the Engineering Design Process, where you go through steps like brainstorming, researching, testing, building, and reconstructing.
Isn't there also something called the iterative process?
Oh, yeah. Those steps are create, test, evaluate, and approve.
And you just keep going in those steps, right?
Yeah.
Oh.
Back to the chair. Why don't you tell them the constraints?
Sure. See, only if eight meters of mass can take two meters left, taking five pounds of weight to put in any other recyclable. You have time limit, the chair has three four legs, and it has to be, the seat has to be forty or fifty centimeters tall. Now Ella tells the criteria.
Sure. Must hold a group member unassisted for more than thirty seconds, and must be aesthetically pleasing.
Ella, why are you showing me what?
Okey dokey.
Wow, impressive.
Anything we can do better?
Maybe find the properties of materials, but also stick with that gross nightcap.
Will do. Fun nightcap!
A pretty easy guess.
What's the easy guess?
The amount of spending.
Oh, back to the back.
See, our children's food weigh about five point nine one hundred and five a week, with only one point five on helping recycle.
Like, around the same amount a week?
Yeah.
And?
Yeah.
How old are you?
Twelve.
Same age as your pops, you know what that means?
Yeah, that's just fun. I mean, they can lift up to like three thousand two hundred and sixty pounds on top of the trash.
We should recycle more.
Definitely. Stay tuned.
Next week, you will see our newspaper chairs.
Slap set for this week's segment.
Truly next week for more awesome projects, and thank you to the Glenbrook students that have participated in this video.
And thank you to the school committee for a clean day here.
Gotta run the credits.
Looking forward to seeing the newspaper chairs.
Right. They're coming along. They're bringing in lots of interesting recyclables. Had hammer and nails going today with my sixth grader, so it'll should be interesting. Fabric to even cover the chairs.
Oh, wow. Very cool. Yeah. Alright. Anything else to tell?
No.
We will turn open to questions, comments, and feedback. If you would like to jump in. Go for it, Kevin.
That was great. Thank you for sharing that. I mean, we know how, how hard you guys have worked on this, and it's great to see the enthusiasm and the humor and, you know, how much fun the kids are having doing, doing some fun stuff. So that was great. Thank you so much for, for sharing that. It's glad. It's great to see them having fun and, and learning stuff while they're doing it.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Kevin.
Mary?
I just loved the wide variety of projects, you know, that were...
Were all grades represented, or?
Sixth and eighth were represented, yes. The seventh were working on bridges, which you saw last month, so we didn't put that in there.
It was really neat to see a variety of products and kids, and I was thinking about middle school spaces and how a middle school with flexible learning spaces would be really helpful to a STEAM teacher probably, so I hope that happens for you.
Absolutely. Yes.
So I love seeing the kids in the hallways and outdoors and all this.
Mm-hmm. How many feedback? Gianna?
Yeah, so much awesomeness. I just like, but, but I really was thinking in terms of my husband, who runs the robotics here at the high school. So Ella, I think, was the robot maker?
Yes.
Is she eighth grade?
She is. No, she's sixth grade.
I was gonna say, we gotta get her over to the high school now. Yeah, just same thing everybody's saying, just like the fantastic variety. Just the processes that they, you know, because in the elementary school, as a school counselor, you know, I'm teaching kids, you know, one lesson is this is how you complete a task. So to see like the, you know, the EDP and all that other stuff, and that's just, that's gonna be ingrained in them, is just super cool. But yeah, I was chomping at the bit to say like, just incredible. So thank you both.
And much the same. I thought that was wonderfully done all the way around and appreciated all the time and effort that went into it. One specific piece that I'd like to hold up is just, I appreciated the shopping cart redesign challenge. I just think that's such a powerful way to encourage kiddos at an early age to just look at the world around them with a critical lens and take everyday items like a shopping cart and try to approach it with an entrepreneurial lens of how could this be improved? How could we improve everyday things in the world around us? So I thought that was really neat.
Thank you. That idea actually came from a video that we showed the kids using the EDP process. So they saw the video after, and they're shocked that, you know, these high paying, marketing gurus out in Seattle are coming up with the same ideas as they are. So, thank you.
Amazing.
Love that. And I loved being able to see them talk through their process and how the process comes together from start to finish, from brainstorming and figuring out what they're gonna tackle to that reflection piece, and also seeing that they had the opportunity to do some writing and reflecting on how they collaborated together and what that collaboration looked like, and saw a lot of elements of the vision of the graduate throughout their entire presentation. So it was really nice to see in action as well.
So yeah, Emery, I know you want this to be about the kids, and as always, you put the kids first, and, and they're the, they're the focal point of everything. But can you talk a little bit about the, some of the work that went into preparing yourself to be a STEAM teacher? And, and what had to happen over the summer even, and some of the, some of the trainings that you went to and the materials that you secured for the kids?
Yes, yes. It's been an exciting experience for me, coming at a great time in my career. I searched and researched different programs where maybe I could get certified quickly over the summer, going from an instruction technology teacher to a full fledged STEAM teacher. WPI, Worcester Polytechnic Institute, came up, and low and behold, it was a summer certificate program, and they had availability. And so I registered and, thank goodness, you know, it was funded by the school. And John McCarthy, my awesome colleague, he, I, I went to him and I said, you know, I know you have the science background. Maybe you don't even need this certification. Are you interested? And he said, of course I'm interested. So he joined me. We got to know each other over the summer during that certification program. And it was about probably fifteen middle school teachers, so the professional learning community, community that we built, you know, right off the bat was phenomenal, and we're still in touch with those educators and sharing ideas and, and things of that nature. So the three D house was, you know, due to somebody that, that I had met, and actually, that was Egwam Junior High School. I got that idea and worked closely with the teacher there. So that certification just was so exciting for me. It's what I needed and change of pace, so it came at good timing. So thank you for that.
And I do wanna give a shout out to Emery because, you know, she, she was ready for a change. We had this conversation about switching it up, and she went from being, you know, just the traditional technology teacher, which is what we had going on in school, to being a STEAM teacher, and she took on the challenge. She was nervous, I think, at first.
Sure.
It's intimidating to take on something new, but, you know, she's crushing it, and yeah, I think it's, it's pretty great what they're doing in there. It's very cool, and proud of you for taking this on. Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, and shout out to John McCarthy, if, him coming on. He's taught me so much. And I'm looking forward to water rocket launching coming up for my next project, that, yes, that he's done in his other school. So, yeah, he's phenomenal. He has such great, great projects and a fervor for the science.
Has it been difficult, starting the program, you're introducing it to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and then going forward, you're gonna roll the sixth graders into seventh, and then eventually into eighth?
Yes.
I'm sure you've had to been thoughtful about what that's going to look like over the course of a couple of years, right?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up, because right now, we need to, going into the summer, we need to develop an eighth grade program. So we're looking, hopefully, to get some hours from whomever approves that. But that will be our work over the summer to, to, you know, take what we learned at the WPI program, which was fabulous. And those two professors that run that are still in touch with us. In fact, John just went to WPI on Friday, I wasn't available, during the April break, and showcased one of his, the bridge presentation from his kids. So that was great, at WPI. And so, yes, the summer will be busy for us trying to now, you know, nail down an eighth grade curriculum, because we have the sixth and seventh. We've been running the seventh and eighth pretty much parallel, because it was just too much to take on so quick, all three grades. So, yes.
Well done. I, I was thinking about every letter in the STEAM acronym being represented in the projects that you put together, truly.
Yes, exciting.
And shout out to Sue too, for, for being such a great supporter of the, of the program and helping it get off the ground. It was a, it was an important lift for us, and it's been, it's been really, it's been great.
It's been great. You know, flexible thinking and growth mindset being demonstrated by adults for kids, because you sound like it was somewhat a breeze change. It wasn't. You were happily teaching technology integration, and all of a sudden, you made a big switch and just did it graciously and dove into it, and had a lot of support from your admin. So thanks so much. Yeah, it's been fun to be in your classrooms. Yep.
Thank you. Alright, well, thank you very much for Paula and Ms. Salvon for coming by tonight. We appreciate it. That's always our favorite part. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Alright.
Thank you both. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Nicole, can you give her my?
Eva?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Just for?
Yes. A lot of Ella's coming your way.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Alright, moving on, in our meeting, we have reports. So, school committee share report. I don't have a lot of things, other than to quickly draw attention to the active recreation area survey that went out through the school district in email. It's also available on social media, on the school website. So check that out. It's an opportunity for town residents to participate in some assessment and strategic planning towards improvements in the town's recreational spaces, so that would be great. And then also, two meeting things to draw our attention to. The first is our town meeting on Tuesday, May ninth, at seven PM, and the second is just a reminder that because of the town meeting on the ninth, our next school committee meeting will be Thursday, May eleventh. So just quick reminders on those. Alright, superintendent's report.
Sure. A few items. We have on Friday, the River East School Career Annual Recognition Event. It's a, all the districts that participate in the River East School Career Partnership get together over at Wilbraham Country Club, and we recognize the outstanding mentor-mentee partnerships. And this year, representing Long Meadow is Matt Richards and Danny Shea, who you met several meetings ago. So we'll have a chance to honor them as, as outstanding mentors, as outstanding mentees associated with our internship program. On that same day, Principal Tom Landers, Athletic Director, Mike Capitasto, and I will be participating in a regional training sponsored by the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association and the Attorney General's Office around addressing hate and bias in high school sports. So that's on Friday and Saturday. It's actually a two-day training. Thank you to Mr. Mazza for bringing our administrative team together with Long Meadow Police and Fire to work through some reunification planning earlier this week, and so that was a valuable exercise for us. And, and my most notable moment of this week has been the distracted driving assembly that was hosted at Long Meadow High School today. Really powerful event sponsored by, sponsored and done in partnership with the DA's office. And they showed the students some really powerful videos of some, some tragedies relating to distracted driving. And they had some folks that had gone through the criminal justice system because of this, talked to address our juniors and seniors today, and very powerful, very moving, and you could earn a pin drop, and, and I think it was hopefully a really valuable, important lesson for everybody, adults included, at today's assembly. So thanks to high school admin and the DA's office for pulling that together.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Assistant Superintendent reports. Anything from either of you today? Alright.
Nicole, sorry, I had a question for the superintendent.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks for all that, Superintendent. As far as the assembly today, do you know if, like, the counselors were available? If anybody got?
Yeah, great question. You know, obviously, given, given this community's experience with, with, with these tragedies, the counseling staff was on standby and had alerted parents and student body that if there was anything in the assembly that was difficult to cope with, that they were ready and available to support students. So, thanks for asking that.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to student rep report.
Thank you so much. Excuse me. So, starting with athletics, right now, cross games going on right now. Good luck to them. I'm sure I'll see the score on Instagram somewhere. It's on tonight. But I'd like to go back to yesterday with the boys' track meet ending in one hundred and seven points to twenty-five, Long Meadow beating Amherst. That was a great meet, and the reason why that, that score is so high and their score is so low, is a lot, we have a lot of student engagement in sports. Mr. Pantusco, our head coach of the boys' track team, uses the phrase of Coach Divine, God rest his soul, which is keep the pond stocked, meaning we have more than three athletes, elite athletes, in each event. We want to keep a lot of people in the track program, and we have a lot of people in it, thus we score a lot of points. We take first, second, and third scoring, what is that, nine points in each event? That's how we get that one oh seven to twenty-five ratio. And I like to see this engagement in athletics. I think that, that shows a lot about student's character at Long Meadow. Moving to class reports, the two thousand and twenty-four Spring Fling is this Friday at the Carriage House in West Springfield. I know Gianna's daughter is the proud vice president of that class, so it's gonna be a wonderful night. And then Senior High Meadows is coming up in a couple of weeks. From what, from what I know, and obviously as a senior, I've never been, but it's just a fun day. We don't have to go, don't have to go to class, going out and just having a good day with our friends outside. Some legislation for y'all. So a new committee has been made out of the SFAC body, called the Constitution Committee. I, myself, have been heading up that committee. That is rewriting the charter of student government in the school. We, that document has not, has always been just ratified every year. It's our, it's our first act, thing of business. We just, we pushed it out of the way. We don't really think about it. And then we got into reading it this year, and it was very sparse, somewhat poorly written, and we have taken, thanks to Ms. Drowick, have compiled lists, every constitution from all the, all the schools in most of Mass, most of Massachusetts, taking best practices out of their constitution, their charter, and seeing how it can be implemented at Long Meadow. And that's what myself and my And that's what myself and my committee have been working on, is really rewriting it, looking how, seeing how it's going to look at Long Meadow, seeing what best fits for us. And the document's going to be really good. It's going to take some time, but it's something that really needs to get done. I thought I'd let you know about that. So there's going to be a whole, whole new structure. And it's going to be a really good guiding document. And then a motion passed a couple of days ago for the creation of class reps into the student council structure. So what that is going to look like is every class is going to have three class representatives. These are elected positions and they are a voting member of the Svac body. However, they are not a class officer. For say you're not your traditional president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. These are people who are active, willing to work, and willing to help. And it's going to lighten the load because there's a huge load on a high school student of, you know, a whole class of maybe 200. That's a lot. And we want to take that burden off of them. So we're giving, creating more positions, but we're also distributing the work and giving people who have a passion and may have not been elected president or vice president or treasurer, and they still have a passion to work, we're giving them that chance and that opportunity. In the school, like Superintendent O'Shea said, the distracted driving assembly was today. I had the pleasure of being there. Yes, guidance counselors were there, counselors were there. It was really, it was very, very impactful. The DA's office brought in some great people to speak to us. A gentleman who was a, sadly was prosecuted for distracted driving. We heard his story. We had one of the ADAs who is in charge of the team that goes out to the actual scenes and then goes to notify the families of the unfortunate death of their loved one. That was very powerful. And I think the best part of all of that, especially because of the tragedy that happened last year, was this assembly was also running parallel with the Civics Action Project in Ms. Poller's class, her junior American History class in civics. That Civics Action Project was about distracted driving and trying to mitigate that, especially under the influence. And they are selling $2 bracelets that says, I believe, it's Drive Safe. That will, $2 will go to the Katerina Bosfield Memorial Fund. And then also, they were taking pledges to say, I'm not going to, I'm not going to drive drunk. I'm not going, I'm going to text someone, I'm going to text someone that night. And that they're entering into a raffle for a $25 donation gift card. So we're receiving those pledges. They're also receiving that money for the Katerina Bosfield Memorial Fund, which is so important. I think it was a great use of time during the day for not only just to see that assembly, but also to run with the Civics Action Projects. Because they have been, I mean, I got to do the second, I think the second year of the Civics Action Project, and I love mine. And I'm glad they're taking a further step in how active they really are, especially with that assembly. It's really affecting the whole school. Move on to happier things. So the music trip did happen over April break. Thank you again for approving that trip. It was absolutely wonderful. So the Long Meadow Music Department was in the Los Angeles area. Highlights would be, are working with Pasadena City College and their music faculty and students, absolutely amazing, especially on the choral side. Professor Guerrero, top 10 music educators I've met. Also working with the, observing the UCLA chorus, choruses and bands, their faculty. And going around the LA area, seeing the sights, going to Laguna Beach for a whole day. And then again, I'd like to thank the chaperones, like Gianna, you said. I think Ms. Worland probably had 10 heart attacks during that whole trip. It was, it was long, but it was great and we had a great time. And I think something that Cece said, actually, Ms. Alontuck's daughter, is she met people that she would not have talked to otherwise. And now she sees them, like, because choir and orchestra and band were very separated in the music department. And we really came together, like, we made friends across the aisle, which is very important. And now I, especially, I mean, yours then as well, I see Mason in the hallway. And I, hey, what's up, man? Someone I would not have known otherwise. And it was a really good bonding experience and just building connections within the music department and LHS, building off that. So Climate Change Club, we approved the, back a couple of meetings ago, we approved the use of, or the pilot of metal utensils. Climate Change Club is taking it head on. They really do want this to work out. So they've asked teachers, and I got to see one of these presentations, just to show the data behind, I'm assuming they said, that's what they sent to you, Superintendent. But this, the data behind the plastic utensils, why we want metal utensils, and really trying to make this work and trying to make sure we're not throwing away metal utensils or we're not using them properly. They really want to make that work. So I just wanted to share that, that not only did they get it approved and now they're just waiting for it to happen, they're still on it. And that's what's important. That's what creates change. And then finally, Spring Concert is going to be on May 11th. So I know you guys will be meeting, but if you guys can get out after your meeting, that'd be great. This is the send-off for our seniors in the music department, specifically in the choral side. There are the altos and sopranos will be singing the Parting Glass with seniors as traditionally. And the tides of basses will sing Brothers Sing On in Boris Apollo. These will be my last time singing that song, those songs. So I'm really excited. I'll also be, I have the pleasure, Mr. Barnett is allowing me to conduct a piece as I'm a TA for his later singers chorus, the tenor and bass choir. So I'll be able to conduct something, which has been like my big project for the year, leading up all my teaching assistant time, I'll actually get to conduct a full choral piece in a concert, which is so, so cool and such a great opportunity. And finally, just congratulations to all our seniors. I know that May 1st is coming up, which is National Commitment Day for colleges. We have so many notable people. I don't got to tell them where people were going to college. Obviously, you know, I'm going to West Point, so happy. But I'm so proud of all my fellow seniors, even if they're not going to college. We have people joining the military, going to trade school, entering the workforce. And that is just as important and just as good. So congratulations to them as National Commitment Day is coming up. And that is all I have to report this time.
Wonderful, thank you. I love that that is all you had to report. And I'm just going to draw attention to the fact that I'm loving the energy that's coming from the high school right now, particularly in the last few weeks of the school year. And yet, some really amazing things going on. So a big shout out to all of our, all of our high school students for all the amazing work that they're doing over at the high school. And thank you for sharing all of that.
My pleasure.
All right, we are moving on to other reports. LPVEC.
We have a meeting tomorrow.
All right, great. Energy and Sustainability.
We have a meeting next week.
Next week. And SEAL, Gianna?
SEAL, so I would just encourage again, people to check out the SEAL website, sealma.org. Just get yourself acquainted with the organization and just all the resources and the networking that they have to offer.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, moving into Subcommittee Reports. It looks like the only one that we have a Subcommittee Report for is Evaluation Sub today. Yes?
Superintendent's kind of.
So we met just before this meeting to pin down the process and timeline associated with completing my evaluation. Obviously, an important responsibility of the school committee. My evaluation mirrors the evaluation process that all educators in Massachusetts undergo. And so after some discussion, the committee had pinned down this timeline. And I'm happy to talk with any committee members individually to explain the process in more detail. Or if you have any particular questions relating to my evaluation, I'll make myself available. But tonight, as of tonight, we can make the template for the summative evaluation available to the full committee. I think it's in the meeting packet. It might be in the Evaluation Sub meeting packet. So we'll make it available to the full committee. No expectation that you begin to complete that. In fact, you would want to wait until I pull together a set of artifacts demonstrating my, hopefully demonstrating my completion of those goals. And so my hope is that I'll have a set of artifacts and some evidence for you by the middle of next week. But if there's anything additional that you would benefit from to complete the evaluation, by all means, let me know. So middle of next week, I'll have some artifacts for you. By May 11th, the Evaluation Subcommittee would like the individual, the entire committee, to complete the summative evaluation documents. So that's by Thursday, May 11th. All seven members of the committee would send their individual evaluations to Diane for compilation. Diane will compile, will aggregate the individual evaluations and make it available to the Evaluation Subcommittee on May 16th. And so at the, on the meeting on the 16th, the Evaluation Subcommittee would develop a, sort of a synthesized evaluation to bring to the entire committee. And so on May 23rd, the entire committee would review the recommended evaluation from the Evaluation Subcommittee. So the key dates, May 11th for the committee to complete the summative evaluation, their individual evaluation. May 23rd, the entire committee will convene to complete the final evaluation of the meeting. And like I said, happy to, typically, I'll talk to, meet with, provide additional information to individual committee members. So let me know if I can do that in any way, shape, or form. So thanks to the Evaluation Subcommittee for laying out a thoughtful process and timeline. It gives us some time to complete the evaluation before the new committee is seated in the second meeting in June, I think it is. Yeah, so, yeah. So that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions on that process? All right, we are moving on to ongoing business. I'm going to turn that over to you, Dr. Shea, for Director of Student and Family Support position.
Thank you. So you'll recall back in December, we had formulated a job description for a Director of Student and Family Support. And this was a position that, you know, we believe is important to expand our capacity to meet the overall health and wellness needs of children, to meet their overall social, emotional needs of children. But knowing that we had some uncertainty back in January and February when we were putting the budget together, we had decided to pause to make sure that we were in a sort of good fiscal position to move forward with that Director of Student and Family Support position. The full list of responsibilities is in your meeting packet. I would just note that, you know, at a high level, this position is intended to provide leadership and coordination of health and wellness programming and services. It's meant to provide leadership relating to our strategic goals, relating to diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's meant to ensure our compliance with laws and policies and regulations associated with ensuring that we are a district that's free from discrimination and harassment. It would coordinate bullying prevention, intervention, and reporting and training. It would work on professional development for staff in these areas. And also, also work to coordinate nursing services as well to make sure that we're providing focused support to our nurses in all six schools. And even ensuring that children who are sort of at risk educationally or experiencing some instability at home are getting the supports that they need. So the question that we had was, you know, would we be in a fiscal position to move forward with this important position? Tonight, I'd like the committee to consider adding this position to the budget. We would, we would fund this position within the already voted budget. But we have had, since the budget was voted, we've identified some additional attrition, meaning retirements. We think that we can fund this position by shifting around some grant funds. We also have settled some, we're in a position where we've settled our collective bargaining agreements. So we have some clarity on what our costs will be for the coming year. And we're also anticipating, there's been quite a bit of conversation at the state level about some relief from the state for the extraordinary increase that we experienced in auto district special education tuition rates. So a combination of factors has us feeling certain that we can move forward with this position with the support and approval of the committee. And so for your consideration tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this position. And, you know, and if you have any questions about the funding of this position as well. For your consideration and review tonight.
Thank you. We'll open the floor for questions, discussions, and or motions. Kevin?
Yeah, Mari, just a couple of things. And again, you may have said this, so I apologize. If we approve this, when would you hire this person?
We had actually, with some of the reorganization in special education that we went through back in December, we had actually posted the position at that time. But we paused on proceeding with the screening and the interviewing and the hiring. We actually thought we were, we were projecting that we were going to hire the position for this year, for the balance of this year, from December to June. But knowing that we wanted to be 100% certain that the FY '24 budget could support it, we paused on that. So we paused the screening and the interviewing and the hiring process. But if the committee were to approve it tonight, we have a set list of applicants. It's a really strong applicant pool, I'm pleased to say. And our projected start date, to answer your question, it would be July 1.
Okay. And can you just speak to, I feel like we've had a bunch of changes in the People Services, Special Education, all that. Can you just sort of speak to the broader thing? Is, again, like, remind me, like, where we are in terms of our, like, interim director and full-time director? Like, I would love to just make sure we understand all of that.
Certainly, yeah, because that's an important part of sort of the landscape here. We have, right now, an interim director of special education. We think that it's important to proceed on a more permanent basis with that, with that central office position being focused on special education. We want to make sure that we're providing focused support to special educators. We want to make sure that that's a manageable set of responsibilities for the person that's in that, in that job. So we would, this position, many of these responsibilities that are in this Director of Student and Family Support position were previously under the People Services umbrella. And the idea now is that we would have a special education umbrella and then the Director of Student and Family Support umbrella. I think, you know, this aspect of our work, of schools' work in general, has grown, you know, as we've talked about many, many times, it's grown enormously over the last five or 10 years. You know, that, you know, there's more and more need to make sure that we have capacity to support the overall health and wellness needs of kids, the overall behavioral needs of children, the mental health needs of children. And so this, this position would expand our capacity. And it would, it would ensure that we have focused leadership on special education and then focused leadership on the responsibilities associated with this position.
And final question. So on the org chart, are these equivalent positions?
They would be director-level positions. So you'd have a Director of Special Education and a Director of Student and Family Support. So they would be on the same tier on an org chart.
And they both report directly to you?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, the, and for clarity, the Director of Special Education by state law is hired by the school committee. And I know you know that, but just for anyone listening at home. But reports on a day-to-day basis to me.
Thank you.
Other questions? Jim?
Thank you for the superintendent. I know when we talked about it way before as a committee, I know that I mentioned, you know, appreciation for this, this position. I'm wondering, you know, given that so much of it is diversity-based, and not just racial, but, you know, like you said, mental health, social, there's 504s. And it's a, it's a big job.
It's a big job, yeah.
You mentioned the pool of applicants. Do we know or are we allowed to ask, like, is there any diversity in the pool of applicants?
Something that we wouldn't typically talk about at a school committee meeting. It would be just part of the regular hiring process that we have to go through. You know, certainly, you know, this position, you know, we're eager and interested in ensuring that we have a diverse leadership pool, a diverse teaching pool of candidates and actual employees. And so, you know, that would be our hope here. But regardless, certainly, this position would provide critical leadership in that area and help us, you know, ensure that we are being inclusive across the board for all people.
Great, thank you.
All families, yeah.
And then I just had another quick question. So Superintendent, in the qualifications, so number four, at least five years of successful experience teaching is preferred.
Yeah.
And then I see number five, such alternatives to the above qualifications as a superintendent may find appropriate and acceptable. So I'm wondering, because I was seeing number four, experienced teaching, like, like I can think of so many people that aren't teachers.
Right.
That would do a fantastic job with this position. So would that mean, like, in number five, like, let's say a counselor applied, so wasn't necessarily a teacher, like, number five?
Yeah.
Would you be able to consider somebody who hasn't?
We certainly would, and I think very broadly about the term teaching.
Okay.
It's really anyone who's, you know, has some experience as an educator, you know, whether you're, you have a counseling background, or you have a classroom background, or anything else that might be relevant to this job. We do think it's important to, you know, have someone, our hope is that we have someone with some strong administrative credentials as well, because some of the work associated with this job is, involves a lot of compliance matters, and it's just critical that we have someone who can provide that, that sort of district-level leadership.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions, discussion, and/or motions?
So I move that the school committee authorize the addition of a new position, the Director of Student and Family Support for the districts.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right, thank you. Look forward to hearing more about the position as it develops.
Absolutely, yeah. Our hope is that we would, you know, reactivate the hiring process, and it will take several weeks to go through that process, but when we arrive on a, with a final candidate, be sure to bring the candidate to the, to the school committee.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, we are moving into new business, and we have a few building requests. Have you taken that?
I can, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So we have two building use requests for consideration tonight. The first is submitted by the Glenbrook PAC, request for use of Glenbrook Cafeteria and Parking Lot on Sunday, April 30th, for, which is, they're hosting their Bulldog-5K event. It is from 7:00 a.m., 7:00 to 11:00 a.m. And this is, I believe, an annual event that they host over at Glenbrook.
All right, questions related to that? We have a recommended motion.
I move that the school committee approve the building use request from the Glenbrook Middle School PAC for use of the Glenbrook Middle School Cafeteria and Parking Lot on Sunday, April 30th, 2023.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, we will move to a roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me as well, and wish them luck with their race.
The second request is, been submitted from the Wolf Swamp School PTO for use of the Wolf Swamp School Gymnasium on Saturday, May 6th. They will be hosting a multicultural night. I believe the request is from, use of the building from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I believe the event is like 11 to 2. I believe they've, they've held an event like this in the past also.
Any questions and/or motions?
I move that the school committee approve the building use request from the Wolf Swamp Road School PTO for use of the Wolf Swamp Road School Gymnasium on Saturday, May 6th, 2023.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me as well, and wish them luck with the event. All right, we have one final motion remaining in front of us.
I move that the school committee adjourn to April 25th, school committee meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you, and we will see you all next at the town meeting on May 9th. All right.